Okay, let me call the order of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency meeting for today, Friday, the 13th of November 2015. Please rise.
Charlie, you want to lead us, please?
Raise your hand over your heart and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Here.
Director Cravens?
Here.
Director Bennett?
Here.
Director West?
Here.
Director Borchardt?
Here.
Okay, agenda review.
Yes, we have one, we're making one recommendation that item number two be continued to the board's December 11th board meeting.
Okay, do I hear any objection to that? Okay, hearing no objections, so ordered. Public comments, an opportunity for the public to address the board on GMA issues, not on the agenda, anybody? Okay, by the way, I just, having saw, I saw Bob in the back, Andy's here and Bob is here, so I don't see any other alternates, so let's get that in there, sorry. Board member comments, any comments from members? Yes, ma'am.
I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Very good. What time do we come for dinner?
Dave has told us not to come.
Yeah, he's already thrown us out, so.
We're eating at noon.
Yeah, all right, so Jeff's having dinner for all of us, is that what the deal is?
I like fish, Betty.
Oh geez, but they're turkey veggies.
We're not going there.
No, not going there, yeah, with all the trimmings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. Okay, let's deal with item number one.
Good afternoon, Chair Mulharth, you have the records. For the record, I'm going to present item number one.
Doesn't sound like you're on.
It doesn't, does it? Are the lights on or?
Hold on, there it goes.
There you go, more better.
Thank you. So, I'll be presenting item number one today, and the title is "Completion of Well Inspection Program in Los Poses Basins: Implementation of Annual Inspection Program and Remedies for Non-Compliance." So I have a relatively short presentation interspersed with some data and maps. So, the last time we were here talking to your board about this was in May, and your board heard from us then, we talked about the results from the Los Poses Basin Well Inspection Program. We told you for various reasons we didn't get all the wells that were on the list, your board told us to go out and finish that, your board also directed us to develop a new program for an agency-wide well inspection program and get that going, and in that one, the wells would be selected by random. You asked for additional detail on existing and proposed approaches for non-compliance and to have staff develop standard procedures for inspections and warrants, and the XO was also delegated authority to obtain those inspection warrants or to request them. So, the board letter's broken down into three sections, so these slides will be broken down the same ways. So, section one discusses completion of the Los Poses Basin's well inspection program, start of a new well inspection program, and also beginning compliance-based inspections. The board letter describes that additional staffing will be needed, we're recommending that the existing funded but unfilled staff position be filled, and that an inspector/ compliance staff person come on board to help us with that, and not just the inspections, but really all matters of compliance moving forward. As you'll see as we go through the presentation, there are a number of compliance issues, and your board is aware of these. In terms of completing the well inspection program in Los Poses, is it just me or is the sound coming up and going down?
It sounds good.
Okay, all right. So, in fiscal year 1516, we would finish the Los Poses Basin well inspections, so this is roughly the 70 or so inspections that weren't completed with that effort. If administrative search warrants were needed for that effort, those would be obtained through working with agency counsel, a report would be provided to your board, and then that data from this last round of inspections in Los Poses would be rolled up with what we learned from the first round, we'd get an overall estimate of compliance, we would use that to guide how assertively to look for new wells each year after that. So, starting in the next fiscal year, we would start with a new well inspection program that would be agency-wide, and in that case, the wells would be selected by random, there would also be compliance-related inspections that took place if necessary, we would continue to provide your board updates, and you'll see the slide talks about compliance-related inspections, so this could be cases where there's non-reporting, issues with meter calibration, where the agency reaches out to the well owner or operator to arrange for an inspection and document what's going on with the well. Other enforcement work would also be done in that fiscal year, it wouldn't specifically be related to well inspections, but it could be. As you'll see, there's a lot of, a lot of other things going on in terms of compliance. And then July 2017 and beyond, continue that same process. So, each year would be a new round of well inspections, compliance inspections, and other compliance work. Moving on to section two in your letter, it discusses the existing and proposed approaches to address non-compliance, so typical compliance problems, we briefed your board on this in the past, failure to send things into the agency, semi-annual statements, irrigation allowance paperwork, flow meter information, not just for new installations but recalibrations, failure to pay the extraction charge, surcharges, another important issue, reporting change in well owners and operators, and registration of wells. Now, I'm going to go in and show you some data tables, and I'm going to walk you through sort of how it's done now in the GMA at a very high level. So, for compliance related to the semi-annual extraction statements and the irrigation allowance paperwork, what you'll see in this table is, on the top, it's hard for me to read, it may be hard for you to read too, these are the years on top, this is 2013-1-2, 14-1 and 2, whoop, 14-1 and 2 and 15. Every six months, we send out semi-annual extraction statements, and like clockwork, we get about a 10% failure of people returning them back to the agency. What we do at that point is we will send out the first notice of violation to the well operator. If they report, we're good to go, we keep on moving, if they don't report after a certain amount of timeframe, we'll send out a second letter, and again, we'll send out a third letter. So, it's a very time-intensive process, it's stepwise, that there's a clock to it, but ultimately, even after all that work, we still have round numbers, well, 15 or 20 people each year that just don't respond at all to these three letters that they get, phone calls, emails, that type of stuff. So, that's one of the tough nuts that are, tough nut to crack within the GMA right now.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Are those 15 to 20 people the same people?
Some of them are. And Mandy, you?
Many of them.
Many of them are. Building on this, I'm going to show you a map of the irrigation allowance reporting that we've seen this year so far, and in the past, we've shown a map like what I'm going to show you, but this map is special in that this is the first year that the agency has required all the agricultural parcels to report under the irrigation allowance index. Past maps we've shown you have only had maybe a third as many of the parcels shown on it. So, those parcels that are outlined in blue and infilled with white are parcels that have been reported to the agency under the irrigation allowance index for this year. You'll see some parcels are outside of the agency, right, here to the north and to the south, and these are coming from areas that are grandfathered in to the agency, so I'm going to toggle to a slide showing those, and then I'm going to go back. So, we've got some parcels down here outside of the agency and some up here to the north. These are for water purveyors that are already grandfathered in, they're authorized through the agency's rules to supply water to those areas. Now, the other thing I'd like to do is zoom in on this map a little bit, and Jessica, I don't know if I'm going to need your help to do this, since I don't have a mouse up here.
Can you further request?
Will I be able to pan around in it, or probably not, right? Okay, all right. So, this is going to be a little bit clunky, but I'll, we'll work through it, I'm going to give instructions to the projection booth and they'll move it around, so what we've got in here, so this is the Los Poses area, a lot of the reporting to the agency for the citrus comes from this area, we're seeing some parcels in this area that haven't reported the irrigated acreage yet to the GMA. If, so whoever's in the booth, could you zoom in on that map for me by, say, double, double the size? There we go. We're good. Okay. So Jess, can I just talk through this and they'll hear me? Okay. So, could you take that map and drag it, drag it vertically upward? Great, okay. So, what I wanted, what I wanted to show your board is that there are areas within the GMA where we're, we're not seeing reporting of agricultural acreage, this happens to be one area, this is over in PV, and then I'm going to, I'll have the map moved some and we can show you some other areas, but here's agricultural parcels that are not painted white, that are within the GMA, but the agricultural acreage hasn't been reported yet to the GMA. So, there's some, some non-reporting that's occurring in this area, and whoever's in the booth, could you drag that map down to the lower right, other, other way? Okay, expose more of the northern part of the map, please? Perfect, okay. There's other areas near the coast where we've got large areas of agricultural land that haven't been reported, and there's other areas throughout the agency, and I think you've probably seen enough with this. So, what's different for the agency this year is in the past, without requiring all the growers to use the irrigation allowance index, when we had non-reporting issues, we weren't really sure what parcels weren't being reported, but now with the allocation system the way it is, each parcel that, each operator has to report the parcel, and so when we see parcels in here that are irrigated but not reported, we, we can focus in on the non-reporting issue for those parcels. How many acres are we talking about? Our cursory look is thousands, 5,000 acres or so, could be more, but it's going to take some time to get through and figure out exactly how many acres haven't been reported, but this is the type of exercise that we can do, at least at the first level, to find out where they are. And then, could we go back to the PowerPoint slide, please? And while that's coming up, I'll also tell you that within the Pleasant Valley County Water District area and also within United's Pumping Trough Pipeline area, we have rolled up the amount of water that has been, I mean, how do I say it? Let me back up a little bit. So, Pleasant Valley County Water District reported to the GMA that it delivered about 15,000 acre-feet of water to its agricultural customers this year. That's a blend of groundwater and other water sources. United reports, how much did United report under PTP, Mandy?
Probably about $6,000.
About, hold on, Bob, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if this discussion, if the agenda supports this discussion, it seems like we're moving off reservation. I don't know if this kind of discussion is going to be placed, or if we're adding to its process and maybe some general discussion.
Okay, let me, you've asked a question, Al.
I haven't noted a departure from the item that's on the agenda.
Okay. All right.
Well, actually, I was, I was just going to-
And I sure want to hear this, I mean, this is, this is about the well inspection program, we've got people that aren't reporting, and you've got some, it sounds like you're getting ready to present some evidence about a certain amount of water that some people have transported in, and has it all been accounted for, right? Go ahead.
I plan on just spending a, a short amount of time on that, but what we're, what we've seen is with, with the Pleasant Valley area and PTP, there's a certain amount that, that they have reported delivering to the GMA, but when the GMA gets the irrigation allowance applications from the growers, we're not seeing all that water as showing up. We knew that there was going to be a balancing check at the end of the year, so we've done that. What we've found with, with Pleasant Valley is very round numbers, there are about 9,000 acre-feet of water reported on the irrigation allowance index applications from Pleasant Valley, but Pleasant Valley reported about 15,000 acre-feet provided, so we're about 6,000 acre-feet short in terms of reporting within that area. Within United, we're about 3,000 acre-feet short. So, the supplier is, is telling us what they're delivering, but when we roll up the irrigation allowance paperwork, we're not picking it all up. It looks like we're pretty far, pretty far out on some of these thousands of acre-feet.
Okay.
So, could you clarify again, Rick? When you say short, you're meaning that in grower reports, you're, they're not reconciling with what the provider is reporting?
That's correct.
There, you're seeing less acre-feet coming in from the growers, it's not reconciling with the reporting of the provider?
That's exactly right, and some of that, maybe most of it, will just be related to the non-reporting that we're seeing, it's just not reported yet, if it was, it would reconcile.
Or just confusion with who's supposed to report what?
Could, it could be all of those things.
Yeah.
Rick, if you know the size of a parcel, what crop, or crops are being grown on the parcel, given the IAI, can you, and the, and the amount that's reported, can you correlate those to determine whether the reporting matches the requirements of that crop in order to sort of audit the use of that particular parcel?
If I-
Rick.
Sure.
If all of that were true, and this isn't going to be on, so.
But if all of that were true, yes, but we don't, you know, so some of these things flip three times, and we never know what's on, we, we don't know what's on the parcel, and we don't know the plumbing, but you're right, if we knew all those things, we could create a number that would give us some sort of a, an audit benchmark, if you would.
And-
I think-
The underlying message is that-
Here, there's so much we don't know, and it takes a lot of research to get to it, and it goes hand in hand with the water markets, in other words, if there's going to be a market, everybody's going to want to know that everybody's being treated the same way, and this is a significant amount of effort that goes into, that's Rick's underlying message. Yeah, it'll take some, some serious work to dig through these things.
I, I would say that probably some of that aerial imagery is, at least in my experience, we can tell what looks like citrus and what looks like avocados, we can't tell the difference maybe between celery and lettuce, but, and rough figures, that's at least a starting point.
Mm-hmm.
But I agree with you, we've got a significant data problem here that the agency needs to grapple with, and, you know, we've said it in the past, I think years ago, if, if the agency's books aren't reconciled and solid, we, we have no basis to go from.
In recognition of that fact, and I don't want to steal Rick's thunder, but we have done that, Board Member Borchardt, so the numbers we come up with, we've used the aerials, we know the irrigated acreage, we can kind of tell you what's trees and what isn't, and we can get from this report total water, for the first time, total water applied, so we got surface water, and our number divided by the acreage is 2.1. So, that's the average over a year's worth of reporting for all the water applied, so we've got some issues that we'll be talking to your board about, and this is all related to compliance, because it wouldn't seem that 2.1 is enough to grow what's growing out there.
Oh, you're saying that the reported number comes out to be about 2.1 acre-feet per acre?
Per irrigated acre, and even with trees considered, it doesn't seem like enough. So, and we've had that number cross-checked by some independents, but we're still working through that, and Rick, I didn't, are you going to go to that later in this report?
No, I'm not going to go into that, I think what you've said is about-
But it gets to the, it gets to the compliance issue and, and what we're facing.
I agree with you, and I, I would say there's a compliance issue, and I would also propose that perhaps there's still a data problem, in that somehow the numbers aren't reconciling, and it's not necessarily nefarious activity entirely, although I think we can't rule that out either.
Moving on to flow meter issues, the agency spends a lot of time on its flow meter calibration program, this one has a little bit of a better track record, I, I showed you earlier the non-reporting and how we have this consistent level of non-reporting with semi-annual statements. Meter program is a little bit tighter in terms of reporting, but what I wanted to just point out to you is, each year, we'll send out first notices reminding people that it's getting time to calibrate the flow meter, we give them 120 days, if we don't hear back from them, we will send a second notice, providing another 60 days, and then if we don't hear back, that's when the civil penalties will be assessed. And down on this bottom row, this third notice, we, we assessed four civil penalties in 2014, none so far in '15, but it's also a, a big effort, it's a lot of form letter generation, tracking, putting things in spreadsheets, and unregistered wells, they continue to be an issue, many people, myself included, said, why? Why are those still an issue? I thought we had a real big effort years ago, and we did, the agency did, but we're still seeing them, so where do they come into the GMA from? New wells that are permitted, drilled but not registered, so the well permits that the GMA issues always have the condition, drill your well, here's your allocation, comply with the agency's rules, register the well when it's completed, but not everybody does that. And we're also seeing registration problems with well ownership and operator changes, we're not briefed when that happens.
Rick, we see, at least it seems, the board sees many of these new well permit applications come across, I think staff sees them, you know when they're, you know that they're being drilled, GMA's approved or not approved, the drilling of them, do you have copies of those applications that you could then go back after six months and say, hey, you haven't reported your well?
Yeah, we actually have taken it a little bit further than that, what happens is we'll communicate with the county groundwater group, who will go out and inspect the well seal and assign the state well number. Once that's done, as far as the GMA's concerned, the well is, you know, we should be expecting to get a registration from it. Now, it doesn't always work like that, because sometimes the well owner might take a quarter or half a, you know, half a year to put a pump on and install all the piping, but the GMA does know when they're drilled, and we will, we will send a notice to those well owners- well owners if we don't hear back, but-
Thank you.
Couldn't you, one way maybe of solving that problem is to charge a $1,000, $5,000 refundable fee at the time of permitting that gets refunded when the well gets registered.
I hadn't thought of that. Yeah, that would certainly help.
Incentivize registering the well.
Let's continue and, and get to the punchline on this, and then we can give staff some additional direction.
Okay, well, moving away from those data tables, what, what we have found is, in these previous slides where I've shown you that, you know, we can take it so far and then we can't quite get to 100% with everything, we've looked at what the next steps would be. And essentially, legal action would be necessary. And so that can be, that can be done by the agency. So it can allow for collection of unpaid extraction charges and surcharges, it can allow for recording liens on properties in the amount of unpaid charges. The agency can ask the Superior Court to issue a temporary restraining order or an injunction prohibiting operation of the well. Your board has the authority to decide when to file legal action, and routine enforcement actions can be delegated to the executive officer in consultation, of course, with agency counsel. On recovering costs of well inspections, you know, your, your board has some options here. It could adopt an inspection fee, it could be a, a flat fee or an hourly fee. It could also adopt a permit fee or a one-time fee to offset these. So these could be, you know, it would be up to your board. It could be a regular inspection, or perhaps your board might want to charge for a compliance-based inspection. These are all things that, that your board can, can do. With well registration, another idea that we wanted to raise is that the enabling legislation would allow the agency to increase the reporting requirements for things such as well registration. You know, well registration is, is a key to a lot of this. One thing that your board could do is look at requiring well registration every year. That would help us keep everybody on a well registration cycle. Every year we could require it. The benefit to that would, would make the agency more proactive instead of reactive. So right now, the way it works is if we send out a semi-annual extraction statement, we don't hear anything back, we'll send out a first notice, a second notice, and ultimately we may catch up with somebody who says, oh, well, I don't operate that well anymore. Well, that's the kind of information we would like to have four, five, six months before we start that process. So, and an annual well registration could help with that. Okay, so we've talked about well registration. And finally, the third section in your staff report talks about the standard procedures for well inspections and warrants. Your board asked us to give you additional detail on that. One thing I wanted to point out, number one in that list talks about how all wells would be inspected annually. Really, the, the intent would be that all wells would be, well, they could be inspected annually, but the current thinking is that all wells would be subject to inspection. We might not get to every single one every year. So I wanted to make that clarification. And I've just quickly enumerated these other things. Compliance-based inspections could be authorized, correspondence will be sent, might use a shorter timeframe if necessary. We'd keep agency counsel in the loop, we'd get an inspection warrant if no response was received. We learned a lot in terms of how to manage the data with these field inspections, so we'd be using a field computer. And if we go out and we find that wells aren't found, we'd notify the county groundwater section as well. And that's all I have, our conclusions, our recommendations are that your board approve the implementation of the approach described in Section 1, that you provide direction to us on Section 2, which includes the compliance-related issues and legal issues, and approve the implementation of the Section 3 approach.
Okay. First of all, any directors have any comments? Yes, ma'am?
My comment has to do with the collection of civil penalties. And one of the ways suggested is recording a lien on the amount of the unpaid surcharges against the property. This is something we discussed at the city in length when we were talking about how to get money from people who don't pay their water bills, and this is essentially the same thing. One of the problems is that all of the people who are using the land do not own the property. And so if a farmer is leasing the property or renting the property and using the water and using water from a well, that maybe is registered to him or somehow it's not, he is not related to the property. I think that is something we need to talk about. I think it's an unfair charge to the property owner.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody in the audience want to comment on anything? Robert, or Jurgen? Rick?
Jurgen Gramco, Oxnard farmer. To Ms. Craven's comment, it's always the landowner's final responsibility, and I've never seen a lease where the tenant isn't responsible for water reporting. So if the tenant doesn't do it, the landlord has the authority and force on the lease. And I, I think all roads lead back to the landowner. You can't chase tenants that come and go. And then beyond that, once you identify the landowner and the land and the, the well that serves the land, you have it in your records. And then, I don't know how you would go about this, but when land changes owners, it always goes through escrow. And if there were some kind of a requirement that in escrow, you had to change the registered owner of the well, I think you'd catch up with this.
Okay. Robert?
Robert Raniello, on behalf of Crestview Mutual Water Company. I agree with Jurgen, he kind of stole my thunder here in thinking the same thing. Whenever parcel changes in my water company, I'm notified through escrow and the grant deed as to who divest the new service in. And I thought at one point in time, we were taking a look at possibly working with the county assessor that on the title to each parcel, that there was something recorded that there is a well on those parcels that that property owner is now aware of and the responsibilities that go along with that in order to track them that way. Second of all, about the possibility of registering a well each and every year, the problem I see with that is now you already have two programs in place where the same individuals either cooperate or they don't. And if you're asking for someone to register a well each and every year, either they're going to cooperate or now you've got a third group of people that isn't returning the paperwork back to you. So I'm not really sure what that accomplishes, especially if you're looking at, maybe if you have a focus group or a focus area that you want to tackle and try and get to them another way. But if you look at MNI as an example, our properties aren't going to change, and that's just another piece of paperwork that we've got to do. And really, what does it accomplish for you? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Sure, I'd like to have Rick come back up and answer that what does it accomplish for you, when he said, you know, what does it accomplish for you if you're going to have the same people not comply and the same people comply? I think you said it accomplished something in that it speeded some things up. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. What, what it does is it, it speeds up the GMA knowing that we've got a well operator that's not going to follow the agency rules. So the way I would explain it is right now, you know, Robert's right, there are two periods each year where the GMA sends out the semi-annual extraction statements. And those cover a period that is the preceding six-month period. If something happens in that preceding six-month period, say the well owner changes or the operator changes, we won't know until months, could be up to six months afterward that that change took place. Then the GMA will try and figure out what happened, where did the well operator go, who's in charge? This all takes time. If we were to require an annual registration, that would short-circuit that process. And what that would do is every year, we could, the GMA could send out a request for annual registration. We would know within short order, a month or two, who's operating each of the wells, and we could better, we could have more certainty that when we send out these semi-annual statements, that they're going to go somewhere to the registered operator.
The only, the only comment I have on that is, is that, that the transfer of land, the buying and selling of land, new operators in different crop cycles come and go, and they will always potentially be out of phase with that plan. And I think it speaks to the fundamental problem that we have people that are consistently not reporting, they're not following the generally accepted practice. What percentage of the folks that don't report are repeats from previous years? You say many, then you say a lot. Is it 50%, 75%, 80%? What, what, what do you think the number is? What percentage? Just without being scientific about it, give me your best guess.
Right. So your question is what percent of the people that don't report each year are repeat offenders?
Yeah.
Mandy, do you have a sense?
75%.
So Mandy says 75%.
So if, if, if we add a program that sent to repeat offenders in advance, some kind of notice and the like, put them in, in a, in a expedited recall mode, maybe we spend our energy focusing on the repeat offenders and, and those that have done it year in and year out, we just let that process go. So you're going to, you're going to make some recommendations here at the end, you're going to ask the board to approve Section 1 and Section 3, you're asking for some guidance on Section 2. So let me kind of loop this into what my comment would, my bigger comment would be. We have, we have a, a committee, the operations committee. And I would think that with the kind of information you gave us today, the potential of having a whole bunch of acreage that's not reported, the impact that has on the total numbers that we deal with and the revenue to run this agency, and if we don't make it up with everybody sharing in the pie, those that, in fact, do it correctly are going to have to pay, subsidize those that don't pay correctly. And if we're going to make a market element to the sustainability plan, I think that's one of the key things we're approaching, and if we're going to task two primary areas, LPUG and the Oxnard Plain within the world of ag and the impact it has on the cities to an allocation scheme, and that allocation scheme will have the ability to use unused allocation in a market, somehow we need to get our handle around the issues you talked about. And I would ask that the operations committee, let's assume, assuming we approve this today, and I have no problems approving this today, but I would, I would like to approve it with a caveat, that the operations committee begin meeting more often and begin tackling some of these issues. So as we find out more information, we have a much better way of vetting the information to a committee of the board, and at that, at such time that they believe it needs to come to the board for some kind of decision, we're not eating up the whole board, we're using the committee process. We put that in place for that very purpose. So, and I could see going forward, we're going to have to spend more time at the finance committee because of the market element associated with this. And then there's policy issues. So I, I think we've, we've kind of gotten away from doing some committee meetings, and this, this issue here to me, I think means we need to put at least one of those committees back in to tackle some of these issues. As I said, I, I would have no problem approving staff's recommendation. I think what it's highlighted is this is a big problem in a variety of areas and has impact on the sustainability plan and our confidence that in fact, we're dealing with everybody fairly and that we have our hands around this whole entity to make it work. Hence, I think we need to put this in play and then immediately start dealing with the operations committee so they can be, be able to analyze how well it's operating and make recommendations and adjustments as necessary to the board. What do you folks think about that?
I think that's a good idea. Rick, you asked as well in Section 2 about recommendations for feedback with respect to non-compliance.
Right.
Particularly with repeat non-compliance, when we've spoken before about the, the AMR type systems, the problem has been that there's differing technology and you'd have to replace a lot of meters and the cellular-based, given that that's the only alternative at the moment, cellular-based is expensive. With respect to repeat non-compliance, I guess my attitude would be so what. If somebody has demonstrated non-compliance and you've already had to go to the extent of either sanctioning them to comply or getting a court order for them to comply, and the following year they don't comply, I have no concerns about the cost of mandating compliance and, and perhaps the, the agency, the staff might consider what it would cost, what the ordinance would look like, that then would require the, the repeat offender to change those meters, to bear the cost of installation, to bear the cost of monitoring so that you no longer have to worry about the fact that they're not turning in reports, it'll be done electronically, it'll be done daily, and it'll be done at their expense. Just something to consider.
Thank you.
In fact, when that, when the issue came up, in my mind, I was thinking that one of the things you could do is the GMA, when the county permits, and the GMA's requirements are a rider to the county, because it's a county that permits well drilling, not the GMA. One of those caveats could be that the GMA will, your usage of pumping, pumped water will not be recognized by the GMA as being legitimate until that well is registered or some timeframe. And hence, somebody could go out there and be pumping away, and GMA doesn't recognize that as being legal pumping, and hence, surcharges would apply. I mean, that could get very expensive as well. It's those kinds of issues, whether it's Gene's issue or mine or somebody else's methodology, I think those are the kinds of things that I would encourage the operations committee to get their hands around, because I think those are going to be fundamental to giving all of us confidence that the work, that each of the groups that we have put together and eventually the charters that'll be in place for everybody, this whole system works. I've used the analogy, I think, for a couple people. You've got, you know, the SEC's job was to make sure the security exchange and all that worked fine, and they screwed up oil, and hence, we've got the Bernie Madoffs and the Enrons of the world. We, we can't afford to do that. At the same time, New York Stock Exchange cannot have sloppy business because then there's no confidence in the transaction of trading stock. We have to raise our confidence level, and I think this presentation basically says our confidence level right now needs a lot of work.
Let's take, make a few general comments, and I want to get specifically to the recommendations that we have in front of us. But I appreciate the comment that there may be some data problems and some other issues, but I think unreporting is likely the major reason why we have, we're so far off. But, you know, we have some people that are, are unreporting. That's, that's likely the case, and we won't, you know, it's hard to prove that. That's, that's likely the case, and we won't, you know, it's hard to prove that, you know, certainly sitting here with the information we have. And if that's it happening, and I think it likely is, it's really unfair to everybody who is playing by the rules, to everybody who is trying to solve this problem, everybody who's saying, "We're in this together and we need to, you know, have an agency and we need to regulate this, et cetera." So I want to be really fair to the people whose long-term livelihoods depend on us getting this basin into sustainable yield so they can, they can plan for the future, plan for the next generations, et cetera. And you can't do that, you can't manage this basin properly if you don't have accurate information, and we're, we're not there yet. So in terms of what should we do about it, which is mostly what this agenda item is, I think when we first began to increase the amount of verification, et cetera, and reporting, we were, we've, we became very generous about not pushing people too fast. You know, you get one notice, then you get another notice, et cetera. And I think that was all very appropriate when we were first starting. I think in fairness to the people that respond, because they're paying the bill, everybody's paying the bill for some people who are burning up an enormous amount of staff time, I think we ought to start to decrease that sense of how many times are we going to remind you to do what everybody else is, is doing. So that's sort of a, a general philosophy that I think we ought, we ought to start to move to. So in terms of your things, I'm, I'm fine with the recommendation for, you know, continuing, you know, as you said, adopt staff's recommendation. You want guidance on Section 2, existing and proposed approaches to address non-compliance. And so my, my suggestion to you in terms of guidance is, you asked, the, you asked for a series of things in the second paragraph, collection of civil penalties would require the filing of legal action. I'm saying it's time now, this agency's been around long enough, I don't think we all wanted to rush that direction, but it ought to become just real clear, you're going to face legal action if you do this, and the collection of these fines should be able to help pay for the legal action. Unpaid pump charges and surcharges could also be collected in this manner. I think that should happen. We should just, I don't, I don't know any other way, and again, it's in everybody's best interest to just have everybody go, "Hey, this agency's serious, we'll, the agency, the good pumpers will save money because they won't spend as much on enforcement if everybody gets serious about, about following the rules." Record a lien and the amount of unpaid charges against the property on which the well is located. Yes, if you don't get, if you don't get compliance. I'm fine with everything in this paragraph, I'm just trying to call it out because you don't have it called out here for everybody that may not be looking at it. Seeking, seeking recovery of amounts owed, the agency may also ask the Superior Court to issue a temporary restraining order injunction. If that's what we have to do, that's what we should do. I think that, that fits with, with the comments that we just heard about that. Now, this is the thing that I think is the, the one that I really want to, and that is authority to decide whether to file legal actions currently vested in your board. With respect to routine enforcement actions, this authority could be delegated to the executive officer in consultation with the agency council. I think we should do that. I don't think we should have every one of these come to us and say, "Is it time for us to file legal action?" We, we don't do that in any other agency than I'm aware of. We just, if they're recalcitrant, we should file, we shouldn't have, spend a lot of our time. We have to spend time getting groundwater sustainability agency up and running and all of those kind of rules. So to burn more of our time with recalcitrant people, I think, doesn't make any sense. In terms of recovery cost of the well inspections, you asked, you provided a number of ways it could happen, you made no recommendation. I am very open, I'd like to hear from people that are involved in the business on, on two, two aspects here. And one is, my gut instincts are, just in general, you don't want to say, "Hey, you know, you lost the lottery, we're coming out to do your well, and by the way, we're going to charge you to inspect your well." It just doesn't have the right feeling tone. If you're, if you're doing everything right, then the charges of the, operated the agency ought to pay for that. But the minute you require the second inspection because you didn't locate your well properly or you went anything beyond that sort of thing that, where you were compliant, then you should be charged. We shouldn't have, again, the people that are following the rules paying for the people that aren't following the rules. That's my sense in terms of doing it, so we ought to set those fees. So that's an answer to that question. And then you talk about your board could, and then I'm, I'm open to have staff say whether that should be a flat fee or a, you know, you know, whatever, but I would think that we should, anyway, I think I've, I've given enough guidance on that. And then the thing on the annual, I, I'm torn. Again, I don't want to harass the people that are following, but I want to hear if, if in fact, by the people that are following the rules, if they file, it actually makes it easier to put the pressure on the people that aren't doing it, and it's not a, a, a big problem in others, if you're filing your report anyway and you're just recertifying you got your well. So I'm, I'm open, I'd still like to hear about the annual reporting, that staff is getting close, I think you're close to recommending it, although you're not recommend, you didn't say you recommended it, but could I hear from, I, hear from pumpers, hear from other people about the annual file? I think staff makes a good point, you don't chase somebody for three or four months and then find out that they're not the well owner, somebody else is the well owner. They should know right off the bat who to chase, at, at least. So I'm, I'm open, I don't want to put undue regulation on that part of it.
Anybody have comments on that? Andy?
Andy Waters-Grower. Back to the annual, you know, registration of the well, I feel if you're, if you're already doing what you're supposed to do, you're reporting every three years, you're doing a well calibration, you're doing spot inspections, or in Los Poses Valley, you're doing it regardless, I think that's, that's, that's enough. That's enough for the people that are doing it. If there's 15 people that aren't reporting, that aren't the problems, then yeah, go, go for that. But to do it to everybody every year, I think that's a little too much for the agency to, to, to go for. And again, with the, the well inspection that we, that we just did, that I sent out a letter from Los Poses Users Group in support of doing more of that type of thing, it was again, if they come out to inspect the well and they go, "Hey, it's well number blah, 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 blah," I go, "Well, wait a minute. I don't keep track of my wells by the well number, I know well 1, 2, and 3." That's like calling out your kid by their social security number. I mean, I don't know that bite. So there, we have to get on that. And then back to the data gap problem a little bit. One of the ranches on there was one of mine that's in Los, that's in Pleasant Valley, I'm pretty sure that one's good, but there might be a, a problem with, 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 within the agency there. And I think the other one was David Borchardt's home ranch that was showing up on the map too. So, you know, maybe, maybe we could probably look at those.
Sure.
A little bit of truing up there at the agency level before we go aggressive.
I, I, I appreciate that, I mean, we don't, we don't want to do it. But if I could, if I could take you back to the annual reporting, I mean, I completely get it when people say, "Hey, we're already filing a lot, now you want us to file another piece of paper?" But if, if somebody said, "Hey, by filing that piece of paper, that's really like the most effective thing we could do to be able to, to, to capture those other people that are recalcitrant."
That'd be a lot of work to get those 15 people into compliance.
You don't, you don't, you don't, you don't, you don't see the value, you don't see the benefit cost analysis.
I feel that we do, we do a lot at our level to organize and to be upfront, and that's just another.
All right. Thanks, Andy, I appreciate that. Bob?
Robert Aronio-Cressy-Water. I'm going to reiterate again, you have the information in this building, the assessor's office, you know whereabouts those wells are at, you can find out who the property owner is, and ultimately, that's the person that you should be getting to, not the tenant. Again, agree with Jürgen, you need to go after who has that parcel, and you already have that data here. So sending out more requests for us to fill out additional paperwork, I'm not, I see that you're trying to fill a gap here, but I don't see where the responsiveness is suddenly going to happen because now it's a purple piece of paper versus a white piece of paper.
Just so you know, a question I'm going to ask Rick is, what is the difficulty of getting that information from the assessor and stuff? But we'll ask that. Thank you.
Additionally, maybe just focus on those ones that have been non-responsive. Do a title search on those parcels or on those locations, whereabouts they are in order to find out who they are and go after them that way.
That, that does.
Maybe an hour, I'll go search in the records.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go find them.
That does, that does, in my mind, help sort of justify staff's request to say, "We gotta, we have to fill this position, this compliance position that's out there." Right? Think you had one more? Yeah.
Carol?
Carol Schoen for Zone Mutual Water Company. In looking at that map, I can see that some of those properties I might have left off a parcel number. So it might be a little premature to study that map and then make the assumption that all of those parcels are non-reporters. It could just be because of the hundreds of parcel numbers, I've skipped one or two. Also, on some of them, I can look clearly and see they're, they're parcels that are getting their water from District 19. District 19 reports under TEA, not under an IAI. So you're not going to pick up those parcels that way. So I think a lot of reconciliation can go on before we jump to the conclusion that every parcel that isn't identified there is a non-reporter.
I just want to be clear, Carol, I'm certainly not saying everyone is not. I said there, there are likely data problems, but there also is likely unreport, you know, unreporting also. I think that we have both going on.
I think it would be really a, a good exercise to true it all up, and we can say, if we've got 50% non-reporters, fine. If, if we've got 75% of confusion over who was supposed to report, that may be a lot of it too. So we need to work through it, I think.
Thank you. Jürgen, did you want to say anything?
Jürgen Gramco. To Supervisor Bennett's comment, I think it'd be redundant to ask for people to re-register their wells. When you file your reports on your water use, you're essentially acknowledging the well, the registration and, and the usage. So again, it's focus on the non-reporters as opposed to focusing on the reporters.
That's what it felt like to me. I think this discussion and this whole presentation, the discussion, has highlighted the fact that some of the assumptions that staff may have made in the presentation are subject. The data may or may not have gaps, it appears it does, but it may not be exactly as we understand it. I think it speaks to what the fundamental issue that we're faced with here is, that we need somebody on board whose task it is to, to become a compliance kind of individual who puts some kind of process in place to give us some certainty, some confidence, some reliability as we go forward to come up with a sustainability plan that's going to rely heavily on our sense of confidence that we know what we're talking about. So I, I think it's been a great discussion, and I, I appreciate the presentation Rick has, has put together here with staff. There are three conclusions, recommendations. I've thrown out a, a task process to utilize the Operations Committee to become the go-to entity as staff works its way through this, to give it some kind of board-level oversight. Anybody opposed to that recommendation? Yeah?
I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Were you suggesting, if you look at the conclusions, recommendations, there are three, were you suggesting that we approve number one and number three and send number two to the Operations Committee? Or is number two, I'm, I'm hazy on what your recommendation was?
My recommendation is we approve all three of them. And we approve an oversight process as staff works its way through, they've heard comments about there may be some parcel.
Number three says provide direction, so you can't approve that, you need to give them a specific direction on things.
Oh, number two, you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that's what I was a little bit hazy on, is your recommendation.
Could I enter the debate at this point in time? And that is, that's what I went through. I, I agree with you.
No, I, I know, I'm just hazy on what it is he wants for.
I think, when, I don't know whether you, but you, I think, I, I was interpreting it, you were saying the things that staff is asking for in number two, you were okay with. Does that?
I, I believe these are the issues that have to be dealt with. And, and I liked your summation as I went through the remedies for non-compliance. I thought your overview of the cost of well inspections, there's still some unknowns there on how, and you said to staff, whether it's a flat fee or a variable, blah, 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 blah. These are the kinds of issues that I think need to go before the Operations Committee to sort them out.
Could I suggest this then?
Okay.
And that is that, I mean, I'll just try this as a motion, just for clarity. The motion is that we approve staff's recommendations, one and three, and the direction we provide staff is to implement the suggestions that staff has made in the paragraph under, on remedies for non-compliance and recovering cost of well inspections with the direction that the initial well inspection should be paid for from agency's cost, and any additional well inspections that are the result of, of somebody not reporting properly, et cetera, be charged to that person. So that would give the direction there, but that the annual reporting, the increased reporting requirements, going to the annual reporting of wells, I would like to hold off on that based on the testimony that I've heard here and like to look at, can we get this information through the assessor's office, et cetera? So that would be, when you say work some of this out, any details that still need to be worked out, we work out at the Operations Committee, but let's give them a starting point.
Okay.
So the starting point is, yes, they can file legal action, yes, the Executive Director can file a legal action with County Council. So all of those things that I read would be the starting point that we then, as the Operations Committee, start to monitor. Otherwise, we'll be right back, they, they won't have enough direction to be able to come up with any specificity for us to even evaluate.
In fact, I think we've given that direction before regarding pursuing legal action, particularly on the recalcitrant, repeat offenders. You're right, it is time. If, if we've got 75% of the 15 to 20 people who continually, repeatedly don't do what everyone else is doing, it's time.
Yeah.
It's no question.
Gene?
I'll second Steve's motion.
All right. All right, that was a motion and a second.
Okay. I just want to talk about one thing.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if it's a county requirement or if it's a legal requirement or not, so maybe this is a now question. But in our city, every year in June, it might be late May, but I think it's June, we have to, the, the City Council approves a list of those whose recalcitrant payers for water and sewer, and that is to be placed as a lien on the property. And you have to do it by a certain date because the prop, the assessor needs it by some date in July in order to have it in. We were told that it had to come before the governing body. So can staff do that part of it, or does it have to come to the governing body?
Staff would not be able to do that, but I'm also not sure that that's an authority that this agency has. I think what you're referring to is the ability of a city or some other agency to have a charge placed on the assessment role and collect it in the same manner.
So this is just a lien on the property, it's not a charge on the assessment role?
Correct.
Could we investigate whether it is something this agency could do?
Certainly, certainly.
Because, the reason I'm asking is because when they pay the taxes, you get the money, you don't wait for the property to be sold.
Right, that, that's an alternative to having to bring legal action against a, a non-compliance.
Well, it talks here, when, they may also record a lien in the amount of unpaid surcharges against the property on which the well is located.
Right, but a lien would be something different than an assessment, which would appear on your tax bill.
Right.
And if you didn't pay it, then you would be subject to all of the foreclosure authority that the tax collector has. A lien just is a, is placed on title, and for example, there was discussion earlier about escrow, if a property changes hands, that would be an event where a lien would, you'd be able to enforce the lien, that it would become a condition of closing escrow, that it be satisfied.
Right, but some of this property doesn't change hands very often at all. So I think it's something we need to investigate and check out.
So what I think, I think what it reaffirms what I said, and what I think Steve's motion is, is that there are some individual items in here that may not be exactly the way they should be, but I think conceptually, we all agree that Section 1, Section 2, for the most part, with some caveats, and Section 3 need to get done. We need to get better at doing those, and we've built into Section 3 on those items that were not addressed specifically. The item that you just raised is a variable, that the solution to that is, that we need to get those before the Operations Committee. to get those before the Operations Committee to sort those out, so we start clamping down on this process. And then, when we start clamping down on that process, when the allocation groups decide how they want to divide the pie, and the marketing folks want to figure out how they want to market the pie, those of us on the side of making sure it's fair and equitable are in a more comfortable position. So I would support your motion the way it is. I see, I was going to go to the audience.
John Grower, John Grether.
John Grower, I was going to say, that's amazing, yeah.
As I understand it, I may be losing the thread here, but if you're approving Section 3 of the recommendations, that says that you improve the implementation of Section 3. And if you go to Section 3, the very first point is that all wells shall be inspected on an annual basis. And I'm not clear that that's been the tone of the discussion, nor that you have the budget, as it stands right now, to do that. So I would just caution that before you make it clear exactly what you're approving.
Yeah, I think, staff clarified that to say subject to.
Yeah, so we need to add that as a change. I think Rick's statement was, shall be. That just doesn't work. I had it circled on my own.
Mr. Chair, and with respect to Mr. Bennett, I think this is a really convoluted motion. I think it would be much easier to be stated as a motion if we broke it down into three motions for one, two, and three.
Okay. You okay with that? Withdraw your second?
Clarity is clear.
All right. So let's do it that way. So let's go to item, Section 1. Do you want to make a motion?
Somebody else do that, I'll keep working on my wording on two.
I move we approve staff recommendation in Section 1.
Okay. A motion to approve Section 1 and a second. Any other discussion on that item?
Actually, Chair Mulhart, for clarification, and this may be part of what Mr. Grether was referring to, is the recommendations in the agenda description are numbered 1 through 4. The sections in the staff report don't necessarily correspond with those, and then there are recommendations at the conclusion of the staff report, which are numbered 1 through 3. So I just want to make sure the record is clear as to when there's a reference to number 1 or 2.
It's different than recommendation 1.
That you specify what the subject.
Okay.
John, was that an issue you raised? I'm seeing you say no. You don't know, no. Okay. So Al, if we want to break this down into Section 1, Section 2, and Section 3, and deal with those as individual motion items, can we do that?
I would recommend making a motion based on the recommendations in the agenda. For example, number 1 is here an update, so that would be a receive and file. Number 2 is approve the inspection program as proposed in the staff report. Number 3 would be the provide direction to staff with regard to future enforcement actions. And number 4 would be approve the standard procedures for conducting well inspections.
I think this is what I would recommend, is to, so if you go to page 1 of our report, all right, so I think the motion ought to be, we have a motion to...
Let me retract my motion. No, I think we need to start all over again.
Exactly, yeah.
And so, would you retract your second?
Sure. So, okay, thank you. So let me, so I would say, first, we should vote on, let's approve staff's recommendation on page 1 of the report, recommendations 1, 2, and 4. Because they're all, just do exactly what staff says there, right?
Right.
Okay. So staff's recommendations 1, 2, and 4. Is that clear enough? County Council?
I'll second that.
All right. Okay. A motion and a second to approve on page 1, under recommendations, 1, 2, and 4. Okay?
Now, on...
Let me get a vote on that one. Okay. Jessica?
Chair Mulhart?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director West?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
Okay. Steve?
All right. Then for the recommendation 3, provide direction to staff, I would reference page 3 of the report, and the direction of staff would be, let's start with Sherman Mulhart's thing, and that is that the implementation of these items be things that are reviewed by the Operations Committee, and that the collection of civil penalties from, I mean, collection of civil penalties using legal action, including unpaid pump charges and surcharges, be collected in legal action, including the recording of a lien and the amount of unpaid surcharges against the property on which the well is located. And the agency may also, and that's may, doesn't have to say may, also ask the Superior Court to issue a temporary restraining order or injunction. And that the authority to file all of these legal actions is now extended to the executive officer in consultation with the agency council. In addition to that, the, we direct staff to come up with a recovery cost for the well inspections that has the agency paying from the agency's general fund, the initial inspection for those people that are cooperating, but all extra costs beyond that initial inspection due to somebody's lack of cooperation or inappropriate filing, et cetera, be paid for by them. That's something they'll have to work out the exact details on, report to the Operations Committee. And the, and I'll make no motion on the annual reporting requirement, because we just want to wait and monitor the issue of the annual reporting requirement request of staff. Does that provide the clarity?
Yes. The only thing you said that I'd like to modify is that the Operations Committee will review the second major paragraph, essentially, under remedies of non-compliance. And I want that to be, not only review these items with staff, but if they determine additional approaches need to be made, review those and bring them back to the board, so we meet the overall objectives that we're trying to accomplish. I want to give the...
I'd like to clarify my, it seemed to me that what you proposed initially was that this whole Section 2, all these subjects be discussed at the Operations Committee and come back to us. Because there were potential other solutions for some of these issues. I appreciate Director Bennett's idea of trying to get this all kind of on the road, but, I mean, Director West brought up a few of these issues, possible solutions for some of these problems, that I think, just in brainstorming with staff and the committee, would narrow this down, give us, give the board something very finite and clear to vote on.
Plus, can we do anything more than give direction to staff? I mean, can we actually vote on adoption of some of these things? Because the item 3 says provide direction to staff. It doesn't talk about implementing or adopting. Just, I'm okay either way, I just want to make sure.
Yeah. I guess, I guess, I guess I think the reality is that somewhere in between those two, we're not adopting and locking these things in. We're, but we are trying to say, narrow it down, say, give this the starting point. They've kind of come to us and said, there's all these options, right? Give them a starting spot, so when they come to the Operations Committee, we're not, again, starting all the way out here, but we're starting with what we have a sense. If what I said is the sense of the board, I think it is, from looking at the head nod, I think most people are saying, let's go after the recalcitrant ones, let's not punish the ones that are, so that's the direction, and these things do that. And the second thing is, let's, as you nodded your head, too, let's not keep giving everybody second and third and fifth chances, let's start to get some legal action, and let's start to do things. So it doesn't adopt it yet, it gives them the direction to write something up for us to now have some specificity to look at and adopt, and that's when Director West...
So what were the first words of your motion? I thought it was to adopt these.
No, it said provide direction to staff. And so the direction to staff is to start with these things that staff is asking for as the new remedies for non-compliance policy.
But I think what Mr. Borchardt is saying, if we've already told staff to start doing these, why would they then take them to the Operations Committee?
Because...
It seems that they'd go to the Operations Committee and then come back to us with this, especially where there are different ways of implementing these, come back to us with how do we do this, or how do we...
Well, a way to clean it up even more, if you want to say, is to direct staff to bring to the Operations Committee these things, to bring a policy to the Operations Committee that starts with these things.
I think that...
That work?
Yeah.
Okay. Bob had a question or a comment?
Bob Primmer, Pleasant Valley County Water District. I appreciate the struggle going on here to implement and ratchet down in terms of enforcement. I'm just wondering if some of this needs to be done by ordinance changes, and perhaps direction should be given to staff to work with council to determine which of these enforcement actions might be implemented through ordinance changes, and then go through the proper ordinance change process and public hearings. I have a sense that these are ordinance changes that you're going to end up making, and they need to have due process applied to them.
Okay. And it may be that the answer to that question is, it's just, it's another reason why this, we're giving this as direction, how you implement these, so that they've passed legal and logical hurdles, why we're sending it to the Operations Committee. But these are the issues that we want you to deal with. So I think out of the Operations Committee, we can get those kinds of recommendations, if necessary. Okay.
When will the Operations Committee meeting be scheduled, as soon as possible?
I would ask that that be done. Okay.
And Chair Mulhart?
Yeah.
With regard to the authority to initiate legal action, my recommendation would be to agendize that for a future meeting, and it could be as soon as the next board meeting. I think, unless your board wants to completely delegate that authority, I think a resolution, for example, that defines what is considered routine legal action should be defined and adopted by your board.
Okay. Did you hear that comment? So the motion, as I understand, Steve, I'm going to ask, the motion that you've made, that I think we're close to agreeing to, we've heard a caveat about it may lead to some ordinance changes, Operations Committee's got to make that decision. The only one that we're not going to give at this point in time, no, I guess we still can give direction that we want to take a hard look at the lien process, and you just brought it up, the authority to take legal action. I think at the Operations Committee, you need to report on that and tell the Operations Committee that that won't work or that will work. Maybe that's the venue that we can use. And then out of that, if you determine it needs a separate motion again, then we can do that. Can we do it that way?
Well, what I was trying to say is that with regard to routine legal action, I think, I don't necessarily see a need for committee discussion of that. That's just a matter of how much authority each of your board want to delegate to staff to decide if and when to file. The other issues could certainly benefit from committee discussion, but that, and that could, in order to address the stated desire to expedite the process, could be done as early as your next board meeting.
So, all right, so what you're saying is, the last sentence, you would recommend the last sentence not be included in this, you want to make some kind of review of what you would recommend to the board of what constitutes routine enforcement?
And more specifically, that that would be brought back at the next board meeting for adoption by your board.
Sure.
I need to say something. You're not aware of the staffing challenges that we're facing, I was going to tell you under executive, we'll bring that item back at some point, but I don't guarantee it's the next meeting. And there won't be anything done on this until we bring it back. So the way I'm hearing it, your board said, go ahead, hire the person, bring the procedures back to the, bring the procedures back to Operations Committee, and then back to the board. We can do that.
I think that's good.
Okay. And including this respect to routine enforcement, that gives Al and you to advise the board...
I don't see any reason why that shouldn't come to the Operations Committee, just so the exact same things that he wants to say here could happen at the Operations, and we can just kind of clean this up, so we don't have, this is kind of, this is a little bit messier than you want it to be when it's in front of the, in front of the board at this point in time.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
Was there a second?
Was there a second?
I hope you have to see.
A second. Any other discussion? Jessica?
Chair Mulhart?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director West?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the first motion that Mr. Bennett made, he moved to adopt 1, 2, and 4 in the recommendation, under recommendations on page 1 of 5. And if you look back to what they're talking about for standard procedures for well inspections and warrants, the first one is still, all wells shall be inspected on an annual basis. Was included in that motion to make that so that, to change that on a...
May be inspected.
All wells are subject to...
Subject to, I think that was the...
Was the "shall" changed to "subject to"?
Yes.
I'm asking the clerk, because she records what, so...
Director Craven, that was, I do have that reported in the first motion, but that was retracted. It wasn't clarified in that second motion made by Director Bennett.
What do we have to do to clarify that? Do we have to make another motion?
I would make another motion. So just make the motion that, do you want us to go all the way?
Will you reconsider?
How do you want us to do this?
It could just be a motion to amend the previous action to reflect that change to the standard procedures.
Okay. Go ahead and make the motion.
Make the motion to amend the previous approval of recommendation 4 on page 1, so that it now says all wells shall be subject to...
Inspection.
Annual inspection.
Annual inspection.
Okay, that's a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second. Any discussion? Jessica?
Chair Mulhart?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director West?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
Okay. Let's get, go to item number 3.
So much for 20 minutes. You blew...
Chair Mulhart, directors, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Tulley Clifford with Ventura County Public Works Agency, and I'm the Director of the Watershed Protection District. The item before you is a request to the County Board of Supervisors to support an application for a grant under the Sustainable Groundwater Planning Grant Program with the California Department of Water Resources. This is an unusual request and does not conform to a more comprehensive process we would normally follow. Normally, we would collaborate with all other agencies eligible or potentially eligible to receive funds under the program and move forward with the best submission to effectively utilize the funds. However, the grant program is different than we normally see. This portion of the Sustainable Groundwater Planning Grant Program is designed to encourage sustainable management of groundwater resources by providing $10 million of Proposition 1 funding for projects that support sustainable groundwater management planning and implementation. And applications have to meet a series of criteria, including, the applicant must be a county government. The basins cannot be subject to adjudication, and the county that is requesting the funding must address sustainability of a stressed groundwater basin. For the purposes of the grant, a stressed groundwater basin is characterized as a groundwater basin in which, according to DWR, there is critical overdraft, and/or the groundwater levels within the basin are declining or fluctuating, causing impacts including reduced groundwater storage, seawater intrusion, threatening or degrading water quality, land subsidence, and/or surface water depletion. Under these conditions, I assumed this would apply to all high and medium priority basins, including all 12 within Ventura County. But this does not seem to be the case. In discussions with the Department of Water Resources, and within a draft grant proposal that we packaged, that we received in August, DWR actually said that they would be reluctant to consider basins other than those with critical overdraft, except in the case of disadvantaged communities. That's not written anywhere explicitly within the guidelines, but that's the... That's not written anywhere explicitly within the guidelines, but that's the direction that we were basically given from them. And so, in reality, we responded to the draft, saying that we felt restricting this grant process to counties only would limit the reach of the funds to all of the basins and to other local agencies, and that we felt the solicitation was somewhat premature, given their definition of stressed basins, and that adhering to this definition, that seems to be so loose, would perhaps be problematic in applying funds to as many basins as possible. And so, we have a lot of concerns that all the local agencies wouldn't have access to a portion of this $10 million in funds. So, and if we looked at it mathematically, it's also problematic in that we have 12 of the 127 high and medium priority basins. We have one of the 17, we are one of 17 counties with critically overdrafted basins. If we look at it from that, the amount of funding we should be getting is far in excess of the $250,000 that we're limited to under this grant. But that notwithstanding, we also don't want to turn away the possibility of receiving $250,000 for planning towards sustainability. And so, what, to be most successful then, what we would like to do is to recommend to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors that an application be submitted to develop sustainable groundwater management plans for the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley basins as part of our process. These basins are identified by DWR as being in critical overdraft, are managed by an established groundwater sustainability agency, and have a scope of work prepared for the development of the groundwater sustainability plans. I feel the application would be very favorably received. This will, would enable us to meet a very tight timeframe associated with the program. Completed applications are due by 5:00 PM on December 8th. And if we move forward with this, we would also recommend that the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency provide the matching funds required under the program. We would do that naturally as we're moving forward with the groundwater sustainability plan. The Department of Water Resources will still have $90 million available for sustainable groundwater planning, and we anticipate working closely with the other local agencies to obtain additional funds leading to sustainable groundwater supplies for all the basins in the county. So, we feel at this time, the other basins may seem somewhat disadvantaged, so to speak, but over time, we have the opportunity to gain additional funds for them. And with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Tully? Dave, do you have, anybody, any, have any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? Kind of a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, Jessica.
Chair Mulhart?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director West?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
If we had only had this item on the agenda, your 20-minute schedule would have worked. All righty. When is our next scheduled board meeting? December?
December 11th.
December 11th. Okay. Anything else?
Move receive and file.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. A motion to receive and file.
One item under executive officer report, I mean, wanted to listen to you. Rick Vergut just told us he doesn't want to work for us anymore. So, he's gone, he's moving on to the Castake Water Agency. It's his last board meeting, just wanted your board to know. It's a hole that's being created, it's going to be a little, takes some time to fill, but we want to wish him the best. He's got a great promotion, great job, and he's five miles from home at that new agency.
You know, it's good, because United hired its general manager from the Castake Water Agency, and so, we're just, you know, it's like baseball, we're trading key players, flowing, yeah, yeah. I had said to you earlier, but I'll say it in public again, it has been an absolute delight and pleasure to have you work on behalf of the agency. The expertise, the concern, the professionalism, you brought all that to the table, and, and I want you to know, I appreciate it, and I thank other board members and folks in the audience. And I wish you the best of luck in your new endeavors, and congratulations. And we got big shoes to fill, and you're going into hotter climate, well, you live out there anyway, so you've got hotter climate. But anyway, congratulations to you.
Thank you very much, and I've appreciated being here and learning, and I'm glad to have been able to help on such important issues.
All right, very good. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt, to receive and file. Jessica.
Chair Mulhart?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director West?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
Okay. All right.